Hey, everyone. Just checking in to see if we're ready to get started. I don't have a camera image from the boardroom, so.
Brittany, is David Wheaton on?
Yes, David Wheaton is on the line.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm going to call to order this special meeting, Board of Directors and the Customer Advisory Committee. And what I'd like to do first is the roll call of Directors. Brittany?
All right, President Wheaton?
Here.
Vice President Sheehan?
Here.
Director Reilly?
Here.
Okay, the next thing that we're going to do is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have no visitors other than the members of the CAC. Thank you all for coming, both in person and online. Appreciate it. I don't believe that we have any public comment. A public comment would be for items that are not on the agenda. Does anybody have a public comment? No, I see no public comments, so let us move to business item B1.
All right, that would be my item. Just waiting for the PowerPoint. I think they're gonna, yeah.
Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes, thank you. Great, thank you, Brittany. All right, good evening, everyone. So my name is Missy Pieri, the Director of Engineering for Citrusite's Water District. So tonight, we're going to be providing an overview of the district's Project 2030 water main replacement study and discuss next steps. So as we present tonight, Board members, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to ask at any time. So if you can go to Slide 2, thank you, Brittany. So just like to give an overview of tonight's presentation. So I'll do team member introductions and go over the purpose of Project 2030. And then Laura Mason-Smith, who was the meeting facilitator throughout the Project 2030 study, will discuss the formation of the Customer Advisory Committee and also their role and provide general information about the customer engagement process. Then the project team will provide a project overview of the study, including the CAC-selected preferred alternative. Then the CAC members will be able to provide any comments they have and talk about their experience working on this project. And then I'll go ahead and, well, actually, before that, we'll present the policy recommendations to the Board for their consideration if they so choose to make a motion tonight. And then finally, we'll discuss what's next. Next, please. Next. So I'd like to provide a brief introduction of the project team that we'll be presenting tonight, as well as just saying thank you to everyone that worked on this project. I really appreciate everyone's work and their input. If you'll remember this slide, you should have that placemat at your desk, Board members. So I'm the project manager for the study. And then we have Laura Mason-Smith. She'll be presenting tonight. And she was a facilitator for all of the CAC meetings. And then we have Andrew McDonald with Harris and Associates. He was the lead consultant for the study. And then Habib Isaac with IB Consulting. He provided financial expertise on the study. And then for the district staff, we had a number of people working on the project. Susan Towar will be presenting tonight on the public engagement strategy for the Project 2030 study. And then on the left there is the number of Customer Advisory Committee members. So there are a number of them here tonight. So again, thank you for your attendance and participation in this project. As I stated earlier, the CAC members will have opportunity to speak and provide their perspective on the project. And then just like to recognize Directors Wheaton and Reilly, thank you so much for being a part of this project. I appreciate your efforts and time on this. So next. So just a little bit of background and purpose of why we're doing this project. We've been kind of using the metaphor of this tidal wave of water main replacement that we're expecting to start in the year 2030. We had quite a bit of development that occurred in the 1960s to the early 80s. And so we anticipate those water mains needing to be replaced starting in the year 2030. And right now, we're currently doing about $2 million a year in water main replacement. And we're expecting that number to quadruple, about $8 million a year, starting in the year 2030. And so this study will provide a water main replacement strategy for the district, dealing with the funding, the phasing, implementation, and public engagement. And so we'll go over the study tonight and talk about the CAC's involvement and the CAC-recommended alternative. So next, I'd like to pass it off to Laura Mason-Smith.
Thank you, Missy. I'm so happy to be with you tonight with the CAC members and the Board. And just go back and give an overview of the Customer Advisory Committee, or as we call it, the CAC. And it was a very fun project to go back and look at when the CAC was formed in early 2018 and the very, very active work the district did to engage customers. So they interacted with every neighborhood group and had the information on their website and did a number of phone calls to make sure that they had a good representative group of people. And neighborhood groups were able to nominate someone, and also individuals could volunteer to be on the CAC. And there were 24 slots available, and they had well over that number of people that wanted to participate. So I know the Board looked at all of those, wanted a very good representative group, and you started initially with 24. Most of those were residential, but there was also a good representation of commercial and institutional. And then Ray Reilly was your Board member who served on the CAC. The, one of the first things the CAC did was to elect a chair and a vice chair who ran the meetings. And so Richard Moses, who is the vice chair, is here with us tonight, and so we're very happy to have him with us. And Jenna is on, I believe, electronically with us, the chair. All meetings were open to the public for public attendance and comment. And meeting agendas and summaries were posted on the website. And the meetings were all videotaped, and those videos are posted on the district's website and also the district YouTube channel. All of the CAC members were also invited to the district's strategic planning process each year and also were invited to attend regular Board meetings. So they were very, very engaged in the process in the meetings and also in other district activities. There were nine CAC meetings. The most recent one was just a few weeks ago. And they were held between 2018 and now. And at those CAC meetings, CAC members learned about the water district. So they learned about the history of the water district, that the ditch company, that it came from up in the Sierras, and saw pictures and learned about what an irrigation district is, the scope of the district, and all of its operations. So that before they launched into looking at the water main replacements, there was a strong effort to really engage and educate the CAC members. They learned about district water mains. And so water main parts were brought into the meetings. So they learned, you know, what do water mains look like? How, what are the sizes? You know, what's a 1-inch versus a larger one? Where are they located? And how do they work? And what does it take to assess them? And how do you replace them? And so this was a big part and very popular to be looking at all the equipment. One of the things, too, is as they learned and they started looking at options for what the district might do to replace the water mains, the district then worked with a research firm, Godby Research, very well-respected, to also solicit input from other district customers. So that the CAC, while they were very well representative of the whole, also got to see a lot of very helpful research information. They considered the concept of intergenerational equity. And so rather than looking at, should the current customers pay the cost of this whole project? Or should it be spread over a period of time so that all the generations that have the opportunity to take advantage of the water mains also have an opportunity to invest in those water mains? So that was a big conversation and very important to the CAC members. They looked at different alternatives and different funding options for how the water mains might be replaced and developed a recommendation for water main replacement strategy for consideration by the Board of Directors. And so that is what is being presented tonight. One thing that I thought, I remember telling the general manager, these are the most amazing customers. They're so curious. They come, they get excited about all the information that gets presented. They show so much commitment and so much dedication. It was really an honor to work with the CAC. So that's just a bit of the history of how it worked. There's some nice photos of the CAC members at work. And so it's been a very rewarding experience. And now I will turn it over to Andrew McDonald with Harrison Associates.
Hi, Laura. Thank you. I'm extremely happy to be here tonight, too, presenting the final project study for Project 2030 water main replacement. A lot of work definitely went into this study. And as presented in the staff report, we first started working on this study in October of 2017. The building blocks of the study include the asset inventory, a water demand forecast, a water main replacement analysis with costs, a phasing plan, a funding strategy with rate options analysis, an implementation plan, and market research. If you can move to the next slide, we'll come together. We presented these building blocks to the CAC in technical memos over 10 meetings and workshops. We also presented a 30% and a 60% update to the Board of Directors in September 2018 and in April 2019, respectively. We're here tonight to present the final study, which combines all of these technical memorandums into one document. So on the next slide, we can, I'll summarize the TMs, as we call them. So TM1 was the water demand forecast. TM2 was the infrastructure challenges. TM3 was the water main assessment. TM4 was the spending and funding alternatives. TM5, which is not listed, but TM5 was the market research. TM6 was the phasing plan, and TM7 was the implementation plan. And in addition to these technical memos, a section was added to summarize and to provide an overview of the CAC work throughout the study. This section is Section 3 of the final study, again, in the staff report. It contains a summary of all the CAC workshops, and it also includes the updated financial position of the district and an update to the CAC-selected preferred alternative 5.4, which was voted on and endorsed at the workshop earlier this month. I think Missy is going to continue to give you some more information on that.
Yes, thank you. So the CAC-selected alternative 5.4 back in September 2019. So a couple of weeks ago, on June 8th, we did meet back with the CAC and presented this information to them. And I believe you were maybe were in attendance, so you might have already seen this slide. But we wanted to give an update on the district's financial position since they voted on 5.4 since September 2019. So these three bullets are the key things that have changed since then. So in late 2019, the CHWD Board approved a rate increase of 11% for fiscal year 2020. So when Habib did the financial analysis, you know, he added that 11% into the model and then re-looked at the numbers. And then Bullet 2 is the district did not increase rates or implement separate funding for Project 2030 in fiscal year 2021. So that was a slight change from the original assumptions. So Habib, again, revised the model. And then the third bullet is this, the district had successfully ended several budget years in a better net position than was projected due to expense control. So the pay-go-or-the-pay-as-you-go component of this alternative 5.4 has been bolstered unless pre-funding is now required. And so we presented that to the CAC at the June 8th meeting. And so with that, I believe Habib will take over.
Thank you so much, and hopefully you guys can hear me okay.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, thank you so much. This slide shows what the original 5.4 alternative was. And if you recall, there is a couple of components that make up our funding strategy. There's pre-funding, pay-as-you-go, base rates as they continue to adjust, and then also debt financing. And in this original one, we expected $22.5 million of pre-funding. Back then, that was even starting with the pre-funding of 2020. And then debt financing was going to cover some of the funding gaps, so around 4% would be debt finance. And the total average annual spending of the project was $7.8 million over the entire term from 2030 to 2080. And with that, the pre-funding amount reflected a surcharge of $8.63 to generate $22.5 million prior to 2030. We list here the 1-inch meter because 85% of all your meters fall in that size of a meter for that account. So, but to keep in mind, the rate, the surcharge does change based on the size of the meter. But most people are going to, would have seen the 8.63. So with that moving forward, let's see what the changes have been. As Missy mentioned, when we did the approximately 30 analysis and study with, and correspond with the CAC when they selected the 5.4, that was prior to the rate approval of the Board of the 11%. So what that does, it changes our baseline revenue, and that's very important. Granted, no adjustments during the COVID-19 pandemic also plays a factor. But you also added additional accounts. So the 8.63 was going to join $23 million by 2030. Now we revised it down to $5.25 per month, and now we're joining $12.1 million by 2030. But that's assuming with the start date of 2022. And the other thing that has been adjusted was that this will not sunset at 2030, but it will just continue on through the life of the project. So it's very transparent to your customers and shows the ongoing dedicated revenue stream. Granted, the $12.1 million, that's roughly like 1.3 million a year. That's not going to cover the 7.8, so we still need to have pay-as-you-go from base rate, and we still need debt financing. So to cover those shortfalls, where we need additional funding once the project is scheduled, we expect that the debt may go up a little bit to cover, to gain additional proceeds to cover that shortage. And then the pay-as-you-go does assume rate increases and the surcharge, as I mentioned, continuing throughout the project. So there's still the three components of pre-funding, pay-as-you-go, and debt that was always part of almost everything alternative, and that will continue on. We're just making some adjustments. And this is something that has to be looked at on an annual basis. And then especially with the fine-to-coke before you issue any debt for security purposes.
Hey, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, absolutely.
This is David Wheaton. Do these numbers account for any inflation costs for building materials, equipment, all that kind of thing?
Yeah, from the very beginning, the $7.00 million annual, that is, we do account for inflation, you know, from day one where we're doing the modeling of all the 20-plus scenarios that we had. So inflation is built in. We're using a 20-year average of the cost of trust index from the ENR, and it is inflated every single year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And to summarize those adjustments, just to reemphasize again, the pre-funding has reduced down to $12.1 million. Granted, that's because of, again, the components related to the baseline revenues have increased. There's a little bit more accounts online to spread the cost over, the more meters. And then we'll offset any funding gaps with a little bit more debt when needed, but we'll monitor that. And also the pre-funding or the surcharge continues on throughout the life of the project through 2080. And with that, the monthly surcharge is now down to $5.25 for a 1-inch meter. And again, that represents a majority of your customers, 85% of all accounts. And without, I'll turn it over to the public engagement.
Thank you. So just a quick review of our public engagement strategies. Basically, our primary channels of communication are listed above there. Social media, that's our YouTube. It's also our Facebook and Twitter and Nextdoor. Then we have our media relations, which would be with any local media that we've engaged with in the past. Print media, we've also been working on some items through print media that is informational items that we have. And then information on our website, videos, as I mentioned, YouTube. We do have an FAQs fact sheet and some presentations that is ongoing process. So what is the CAC's role? Basically, to continue to educate the customers about Project 2030, we will be providing the Customer Advisory Committee with Project 2030 information packet and attending Board meetings and community meetings to present the study findings, recommendations, and implementation as required.
So that the CAC are going to be attending those meetings?
Yes. So as an example, when we do our Neighborhood Association meetings, we would ask that they also join us in their Neighborhood Association when we do go out for messaging on Project 2030. Yeah, with that, any questions? Okay, turning back to Missy.
All right, so here's the revised alternative 5.4 again. Just so you have a clear picture of what it is. And this is presented to the CAC at the June 8th meeting, and they did vote on that. And I believe everyone unanimously voted on it. And then I'll pass it off to Laura, because she'll have some additional information with regards to the CAC.
So we're very happy to have CAC members here with us tonight. And I believe some of them would like to make comments about their experience with the CAC process and/or the recommendation. and/or the recommendation. And so Richard Moses, the vice chair, has, would like to go first. So Richard? And if you just push the button on the, on the mic, great.
Good evening. I'm Rick Moses. I'm the vice chair for the CAC. And it has been a great experience being on the CAC, being selected to be a member on the CAC. And the group itself has been great. And, and even with the, with the, with their, our big gap in time for a little bit here, getting back on June 8th, it was nice to see everybody again and get back to business with what was going on. As I said, we voted again on the revised version 5.4 on June 8th, 2021. And we did not have a quorum just by one person. But every member that was there voted for it. So we had a unanimous vote for it. So I'm, so I'm would be assuming that even if we had one more person and we had, could have had the quorum, it would have probably been unanimous at that point too, since we had such a great showing. They appreciated it very much. As the, as the CAC, the group, they were very excited when the monthly surcharge went down from 8.63 to 5.25. That looked very good. And that got our attention real quick, like, oh, cool. This is, that was pretty great. And the pre-funding that went down from 22.5 to 12.1. We did have many questions on that part just because of the huge difference. And the, and the, the study group did a great job in answering it to us on how, on how the numbers work. All right. I still can't explain it, but, but they showed it to us and whatever the magic is behind it. But we saw that, that yes, that there was, that you can, that it was calculated in to the, to the best for, for the, for the project. As I said, since we voted on this back in, in, in June of 2019 and voted for 5.4, the revised one was pretty nice to see. And even though it's not officially voted, it's, it's highly recommended by, by, by the group that's there with that part that's going on. And we highly recommend that the project study be accepted and pressed on. And that was, that was, that was with the board. I appreciated all the water, the, the Citrus Heights Water District people here that helped us with this, and especially when we had questions. All right. Some of our questions were just, you know, like, like very novice questions. And they took the time and generosity to explain it to us very well. So that at least I could come back and explain it to my grandson a little bit, all right? Though he would have just left. He would have said, hey, I got water. I'm fine. But it was very interesting to know. I knew that water is a precious source. But I did get an opportunity to go on one of the field trips with them to the, to the, to them, to the water treatment plant. And it's that just opened my eyes a little bit more as to what I was taken for granted at times to just that here's water. And I knew it wasn't that easy, but I seen that part in there. It's, it's like, like you could, you could spend a lot of time looking at that and, and studying it. Says, oh, this is, this is not easy. And it's, and it's, and it's an expensive process. Is there any questions that the board has for me at this time?
Well, you did say that you've explained it to your grandson. And I just was wondering that now that you've been in the CAC, have you had any opportunities to talk to just other members of Citrus Heights, you know, your neighbors or anybody else and share what you've known, you've learned?
It's, it's basically my, my level at that point is really has been talking with the neighbors. And, and also too seeing, you know, that there's the water, you know, that they'll probably in a few years be a water surcharge on the bill. Of course, that gets frowning faces and everything. But when it, I got, when I got to talk to him, the last, when it was down to 5.25, 5.25 doesn't sound so bad as almost a $10 charge. So it's a little bit more subtle. I mean, $5 is a little bit nowadays is a little bit like, oh, that's $5. It's, it's not as expensive, but, but you get people are excited, but also to people still, you know, get, will give you the, like, what? You know, another $5? You know, the government's taking more money from me. And so, but, but, but the normal thing, but to me, I see it more of a, more of a humor is that they're doing that. They understand and they expect, because it's, I mean, it's, it's got to increase just like anything else. This is not a commodity that's, that's going to stay the same price forever and that they know that we, that it's, that it costs more. Especially when they see, it's nice to see the guys too when they're in, walking out. It was great too, because one of the times I was talking to one of the neighbors and then one of the Citrus Heights Water District's truck drove by. So I was kind of like, see, they're out here working and they're doing this for us. So that was the great part. Anything else at this point? Or did that answer the question? Okay, cool.
It did. Thank you. And, and please keep it up.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Kimberly Burke, also one of the CAC members, would like to speak.
I am Kimberly Berg, and I own Citrus Heights Car Wash. So as you can imagine, water is very important to my business and to me. So I was, I volunteered to be part of the CAC when I read about it and heard about it at one of our neighborhood meetings and volunteered. And it was a great experience, although, you know, I've owned the car wash now for 18 years. I really don't know a lot about water, you know, and I have to admit that I should know more. And so I really, that was why, part of my curiosity to be, to be part of the customer advisory committee to learn more about the history of the water district, to learn more about the pipes, to learn more about how, how do we get our water? How is it treated? And it was a great experience. I, I'm really not a numbers person, even though I run a business. But when they first started talking about all the different funding options, and I thought, oh, my goodness, how are we going to get 24 people to have a consensus to choose one of the funding options? Well, there's a saying, the more you, you get, the more you put into something, the more you get out of it. And I took it very seriously and I read up on the pre-funding. And as it, as we went from workshop to workshop and we learned more about all the different funding options and the alternatives and the pricing, I did some research and kind of number crunched and, and everybody did too. That was the exciting part about when we all came back together for the workshop and we got in our little groups and we started asking questions. And they were great questions of, you know, what about this? Or what about this? And what about this? And Laura can attest to that too. But there was a natural curiosity and also a different desire to select the best alternative. And that was really exciting to be part of that. And it, to me, it came down to two different alternatives. So I was really thrilled when 5.4 was, when, when that was the deciding factor. And then our last meeting in June, I mean, the numbers just got better and better. So we were excited to hear that the, the, the surcharge went from $8.63 down to $5.25. So that was very exciting. So that option got even better. And to answer your, your question, Carl, that yes, I've already had an opportunity to talk to my neighbors about it. Also my customers too, because, you know, because I'm there a lot at my car wash and people want to know about my pricing and the water quality. And it's a perfect segue for me to talk about being a part of the customer advisory committee and to let them know about, hey, this is coming down the pipe here. We're looking at, you know, changing all the water mains out starting in 2030, and it's going to be a 50 year process. And, you know, water is important. And what I love about this whole process is that we're being proactive about it. We're not sitting back on our, being passive about it and waiting for these water mains to start breaking before we start taking it seriously. But I really appreciate the water district being proactive, going out to the community, soliciting people, engaging and creating really a fun atmosphere. And Laura, you were great. It was really fun to be able to, I know their enthusiasm. You kept us organized. And also a special shout out to the water district too, because like Rick said, you know, we had, we were novices. But it was really great to be able to ask questions and, and they were taken seriously. And you guys had props. We had water mains we could look at and, and then be able to ask our questions and know that there was no such thing as a dumb question. So very exciting. The whole process was, I didn't know what to expect, but it was very, for me, it was very positive. It was very enlightening. And I don't have kids. I don't have grandkids. But I can hold my head up proudly and let my neighbors know that we collectively, 24 people, really took a lot of time to methodically go through all the alternatives and all the funding. And we really chose the best option.
So I, I want to commend everybody who is on the CAC because I've been on this board for at least six years, if not more. And water distribution is complicated, very complicated. And for your group to not only come up to speed on water distribution, what is involved, all of the considerations and the complexities, and then to look at this package, multifaceted package with a wide range of options and sub options under each option. That's a lot of work. It required a lot of concentration, a lot of focus. I don't doubt, I mean, I wasn't there. Ray was there at the meetings. But I'm sure that there were a lot of, you know, good questions and a lot of questions just in order to be able to understand and comprehend the enormity of the information presented. So I really want to say thank you to all of the members of the CAC for that level of effort. It's commendable. It is commendable for, for each of you. And for you individually, I think your role as owning a car wash, you are intended to be an ambassador for the project for exactly all the reasons that you presented. You know, you, you're exactly right. Your business depends on water. And, you know, the management of having it available and what happens after it's used and all of that. So I would also just highly recommend to the degree you have an opportunity, please feel free to, to share with other people.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kimberly. Would any of our other CAC members like to speak?
Can we speak from home?
Hi, I'm Mike Nishimura. I am the commercial representative representing Sunrise Marketplace. I just wanted to commend the water district for having the foresight to be a step ahead. They could have easily closed their eyes and just kind of replaced the water mains as they broke and look at what happened to PG&E. And, you know, we wouldn't have been burning to the ground, but a lot of people would have been inconvenienced and out of service. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that they created the CAC. And it's been a bit long process for us, but we've all learned quite a bit. And we're able to answer questions out in the community now. We tried to come up with an equitable thing, equitable plan. A lot of people complained about, well, they're just going to charge us more. Well, given the alternative, I think they would rather pay a little bit now than a lot more down the road with, you know, disruptive services. So with what I've learned, I'm able to explain it better to people. And I'm able to tell people, hey, if you want to get involved, you can go to the board meetings. You can be a member of the CAC. They're currently recruiting for members. And hopefully I've got a couple that are going to be wanting to join. But I appreciate the fact that, you know, the water district is being proactive about this and being pretty much straightforward with the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Jody, would you like to speak?
Well, like my fellow, oh, my name is Jody Ash. I am probably the rookieest rookie on the CAC. But I want to thank my team members, those that are here and there and wherever else they are, for the opportunity to serve with them. It's been quite the learning curve. I found myself reading through that huge 150,000 page packet backing up. And when it was at page 88, second section, oh my God. But it's, it's been an amazing opportunity to try to serve and help and get things done for the future. And like Richard, I want to, for myself at least, I want to make sure that in 2020, 20, rather 2030 and going forward, that our children and our grandchildren can turn on the tap and get fresh, clean water affordably. So I thank the board and I thank my team players. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jody.
I'm sorry. I had a couple Zoom members that requested to speak. It looks like we have Andrew Johnson and Julie Byers on the line.
Andrew, would you like to speak?
Sure. I initiated my video. Can you hear me on the audio?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. So I'm going to be brief because without, try to be, without reiterating everything that was just eloquently said by former CAC members. My familiarity with the, the, the water district was simply with the bill I paid. If you asked me before, I didn't know. And so in, I think it was 2018, I applied for the CAC. And I was actually denied, but later called back as an alternate and then subsequently as a, a member. So I was grateful for that opportunity. Given the spectrum of the number of customers, you know, I think 67,000 and growing or 70,000 people is a lot of people. And it's a testament that where we're at here, even in this meeting, if there was a problem with our water, I'm sure we'd probably have more in attendance. So it's again, a testament to the efforts and the learning. My daughter, I'm kind of disappointed with the CH, the, the water district only because my daughter did, and I say this playingly, my water did, my, my daughter colored a calendar. And I don't know if you still do it annually. She was born in 2001. She's now in college. And her picture stayed on your website forever. So now I get to tease her and say, you know, well, I got recordings at the CHWD. But to know the extent that we went through and that she'll be 80, she'll be 79 years old when we get to 2080. And my youngest, he'll be 64. So the appreciation to go through, and as an engineer, I could tell and attest to the technical part. It was, it was, it was great. The, the financial connection to what was being done with our water mains was again, the team is a formidable team. They know what the material subject matter they presented to us. And each question was, was answered to the degree we can understand. And again, as a resident, I could explain to my own kids, good job. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andrew. And I believe we have other CAC members that would like to speak. Suzanne Guthrie and also Julie Byers. So Suzanne, would you like to join us?
Yes, I trust I floated through this Zoom. This Zoom is a new thing to get acquainted with. I had served on a irrigation board as a community member before. And I am so impressed with Citrus Heights because not only did you form a board, you actually paid attention to us. And we were presented with the kind of material that I think that you would be doing as internal rather than just to people that you were having served. I felt very much on the previous board like we were window dressing. I felt here like, hey, this is a great place to work. Although I prefer to stay retired, but it said so much to me about the organization. And I can't, you know, be more commendable than to talk about how wonderful you actually are thinking of doing this ahead of the game instead of leaving Citrus Heights to be trailing along behind. the game, instead of leaving Citrus Heights to be trailing along behind everybody else's broken water system, and then come along with the Citrus Heights one. So, so glad you thought of this ahead of time. I'm looking forward to being able to present to my HOA on what's going on. I think that all of those groups certainly need to hear about it. And I was talking to a neighbor this morning, and I said, and we're talking about Project 2020. And he said, oh, yes, that's the water mains. So you're doing your job on getting the word out. And thank you, thank you for involving the community.
Thank you, Suzanne. And now let's also hear from another CAC member, Julie Byers.
Hi, everyone. So I don't know if my video got turned on or not. But anyway, I want to thank
You are with us. Yes, thank you.
I can't tell. So I just wanted to thank the opportunity, thank for the opportunity to be involved. I missed an awful lot of the meetings and was so appreciative of the staff for keeping me informed about what was going on and the meetings that I was able to attend. The people, folks there got me caught up on things that I missed. Fortunately, I have a strong financial background, so the numbers made sense to me. And when we were crunching numbers and I had questions, I got solid answers at the meetings, which I truly appreciated. If I hadn't been recovering from surgery, I would have been that confirming last vote at the early June meeting. But it wasn't possible for me to be able to be there. So, yes, you would have had your quorum had I been able to leave the house. And it's good to be recovering and able to join this meeting, if only from the house. So I appreciate the duality of both the in-person meeting and a Zoom meeting to be able to participate. So it's been a long process with the CAC and very commendable to the board, you, the board, and the staff and the committee members to continue with the process and to be so involved. So thank you for allowing participation. And it's been, it's been interesting, informative, and very much thankful for being able to be involved in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have any other CAC members that would like to speak? It appears that all of the CAC members that would like to speak have spoken. And so would the board, I guess the question is to ask the board, would you like to consider the item tonight? Or do you wish to do that at a later meeting in August? Ray or David, do you have any questions that you'd like to bring up now?
No. I have, thanks, Carol. I have a, I have a couple of questions. And this is general, this is more to Steve than anywhere else, but I think it's worth mentioning to everyone that might be there. I wonder whether or not future boards can alter any of the plans that we eventually adopt. And if so, how might we somehow secure consistency to make sure that our projections are somewhat assured in the future? Would it be necessary for an election to take place to make any, to alter any of the projected projections that we have? Or would it just be a simple board action?
Hi, David. Hi, everybody. My name is Steve Anderson. I'm the general counsel to the district. I think that you've met my colleague, or some of you may have met my colleague, Josh Nelson, at some of your CAC meetings over the years. David, I think the question you've asked is sort of part legal and part sort of operational in terms of the finances and the updates that we heard about from a couple of the prior speakers going on. From a purely legal perspective, on the one hand, your board cannot constrain the right of future boards to take whatever action that they want to take with respect, for example, to surcharges at that time. However, and this is a substantial however, to the extent that part of the program here is to sell bonds or establish some kind of debt, when you engage in that kind of activity and sell bonds or go out for debt financing, representations are made by the district as part of the financing package about what kind of revenues are expected, and more importantly, the kind of commitments you're going to make regarding how much revenue you are going to collect and have available in support of that financing. And so I think the ultimate answer here, David, is it's kind of a double-edged sword. On the one hand, the basic lies that future boards, you cannot tie their hands entirely because they are potentially future elected officials, elected by the voters of your district, and they, they have to be able to exercise their duty and look at things the way they want to look at them and vote on them. But they will be constrained, in particular, to the extent dent financing is issued. And then I'd also like to defer to some of the other folks on here, because I'm sure with these yearly updates about all the numbers, that that's going to play a role in sort of the operational and financial side of this. So I'm sure there's others on the call who could answer that part of the equation.
Thank you, Steve.
So I'd like to also just chime in, just to provide a little bit more flesh to the bones about part of what Steve talked about in terms of future board action. So with regard to the implementation of the surcharge, it's my understanding that if the board were to provide direction to us to include it in a Prop 218 process for 2022, that, and if, in fact, the Prop, the Prop 218 process goes all the way through, and the board result, and it results in the board adopting the surcharge, that that surcharge remains in place as put into place until or unless the same or a future board were to change it through a subsequent Prop 218 process. So as an example, if a future board wanted to lower it, increase it, or eliminate it, they would need to go through a similar Prop 218 process. If, in fact, a future current or future board were to take no further action, that surcharge would remain in place.
So basically, they would have to go through an election process?
A 218 process. Yes, the protest vote process. That's correct.
Yes.
Can I make one elaboration on what Hillary said, which is that most certainly, the board could not increase the amount of the surcharge without going through a subsequent Prop 218 process. But as long as the board stays under the $5.25, for example, if a future board decided they wanted to lower that a dollar, they could do that without going through a Prop 218 process, because Prop 218 puts a maximum on the, on the charges that can be made by the district. It does not prevent the board from lowering those. And that's similar to the example from the pandemic last year, when the board, this board decided not to increase rates, even though it had the ability to do that under the prior Prop 218. It decided on its own accord not to do that, and that was done by board vote. You didn't need to go out and do Prop 218 again, just to fall short or to lower the rates, if that makes sense.
Okay, so the ceiling would be the $5 and some change. If, if a future board wanted to do less, they can do that unilaterally. If they wanted to do more, then they have to go through the Prop 218 process.
Correct, on both questions.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to have you talk a little bit more, perhaps, on the money that is collected through the surcharge. And this may go to Susan, or Hillary, or Steve. Once, if we, let's say, in three years, we have $4 million put away from the surcharge, or whatever the number is. We cannot control how that money is spent. If the future board decides that they want to change the roof here in the building, they could use that money for any district function. So we can't, I don't believe we can control where the surcharge is spent. It doesn't have to be spent on the 2030 project. It's money, money's fungible, I suppose. And so it could be spent anywhere a future board wants to spend it.
So the No, that, that's incorrect. No, because you're collecting the surcharge for an explicit and specific purpose, and that's the way the board would approve it, that money can only be spent for this purpose. It cannot be redirected for another purpose. Absent, I would, and I say that with one caveat, because you'll recall from the last drought, Director, really, that the state legislatures directed monies to be moved around that were held by special districts. But short of that, short of the legislature and the governor taking some kind of action in sort of an emergency circumstance, that money has to be used for Project 2030 or some version of water main replacements. It cannot be used for other purposes.
And just to add, and it is for that reason that we did create that separate reserve account, so that we can allocate it appropriately and transfer it immediately to that fund.
Is it considered a designated fund, or is that, I mean, is it actually considered that?
It would be, to Steve's point, we have it solely used for that purpose. And that's why the 525, as an example, will then be transferred in to, as we collect it, will be transferred into that account. And that's the Water Main Replacement Reserve that was created last year.
Steve, some example, what are some examples that, where the governor or the legislature would be able to tap into those funds? I would just be appalled to think they have that ability to do that.
Well, Director Wheaton, you may recall with, given your background, that I got, gosh, I can't remember how many years ago it was, 10 years ago now, eight years ago, that the legislature and the governor eliminated redevelopment agencies and redirected all the funding and tax increment that all those redevelopment agencies had collected for specific purposes.
Yeah.
And so they are legally allowed to do that. But they are actually, there are some constraints on them because of the various propositions that have been adopted in the interim. And I can't remember the proposition numbers, but there's some constraints now on the ability, for example, of the legislature to do ERAF funding in a certain way. And maybe General Manager Strauss has more background on, on all that, given his background as well. But there are some more constraints today on the legislature's ability to redirect those funds than there were 10 years ago, because they did it so much 10 years ago with the state budget crisis that shortly thereafter, there were some propositions put before the voters to constrain the legislature from doing that with such ease. And so now they are more closely tied, what they can do. That makes sense.
All right, yes, thanks.
Yeah, nothing, nothing to add on that. That was a good, good overview. Prop 1A, it was passed a few years ago, that constrained the state.
Do you have any other questions, David?
I had one for you, if you didn't mind.
Sure, go ahead.
And I think you subsequently responded to this a bit, but on the inflation front, but I had another similar question. You have on some of the Figure 19, as example, where 89% of the mains would be replaced. And so in comparison, what you have now, we're looking at adopting, is what percentage of replacement does that fulfill?
I believe the place that hasn't changed, I believe it was 70, in the 70 percentile. It's on one of the, on the previous slide, I believe it was 70, I know, I'm sure Andrew knows the number of the heart, but I think it was 75?
72, I believe. Yeah.
That's always been the case for 5.4, and that percentage hasn't changed.
Okay. All right, thank you. And that's Carol, please.
Okay. Well, we have these proposed motions for consideration. And let's, I guess we should take them one by one. First motion is to consider the CAC recommendation to adopt the Project 2030 study, which includes revised Alternative 5.4 as the strategy for water main replacements.
So moved. My second.
We get a roll call vote? Director Wheaton?
Yes.
Director Sheehan?
Yes.
Director Really?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second motion is for the board to provide consensus direction concerning the accompanying funding targets specified in this study. Actually, I would like a clarification to what accompanying funding target. Could you be more specific with that?
That's essentially That is essentially the pre-funding amount of the 525 a month. The next slide is next steps. And that would be to, if the board provides consensus direction to allow staff to put that 525 in the financial plan for 2022, and then we would present it to you in the coming months. That's essentially what item two is.
Okay.
So move. Second.
Roll call vote. President Wheaton?
Yes.
Vice President Sheehan?
Yes.
Director Really?
Yes.
Okay. And just for the minutes, I want to make sure, David, you made the first motion for that item number two?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The third motion is for the board to direct the Citrus Heights Water District to develop an education and public engagement strategy, supporting the adoption and implementation of Project 2030.
Can I say something about this one before we have a motion?
Yes.
And this is for staff, and I've talked to the general manager about this. I would like to see, and I'm hoping that we have a frame of mind that whatever we put out there is more than just a Prop 218 required information. It has, to me, I'm thinking that this goes way and far beyond that. Hillary, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's bolstered by some of the strategies that you talked about in this, and this would be more than just sending out a letter telling people they can oppose this matter or support it by just signing whatever papers they have to sign. And so Hillary, can you be a little bit more specific about the proposal that you're asking us to approve here?
Yes, thank you very much. And if the board will recall, Susan Talwar had a brief portion of the presentation that touched on this. Your comments really, I think, really underscore our strategy and commitment to a very multifaceted, very robust approach to public engagement and outreach, not only on this program, but really across the board at the district. And to that end, and specifically to this program, we're in the verge of hiring our first ever communications manager position, a real solid A real solid commitment by this organization to really engage in outreach and education with our customer base at the grassroots or customer level. And so what are some of the trappings of that program? Just to reiterate some of the things that Susan talked about earlier, we're going to do a lot of neighborhood association outreach. We're going to engage a lot on social media. We've been going like gangbusters in the last 18 months to build up our Facebook followers, something that can't be done overnight, but we are doing on a very steady basis. We are developing a Nextdoor strategy. We have currently about 53 Nextdoor neighborhood threads within our 12.8 square mile service area. We are engaging in key stakeholders or customers, not only just the CAC, although it starts with the CAC, but even other customers. We also have the new Garden Core and other ways to engage with customers. We're doing elevated advertising in partnerships with the local media, the Sentinel, the Messenger. Hopefully, not only to get our word out, but to also gain more of an opportunity to have some dialogue with those publishers and editors. We're hoping that we'll have more coverage that's more balanced and complete, as opposed to just about the funding or rate or surcharge implications, but more about what is, what is that funding going to be used for? And what were some of the decisions and thoughts that went involved to develop to that program? So that is our challenge, and it is our opportunity, and it is a very strong and solemn commitment on our part to be as innovative and creative and proactive as we can through a variety of both digital and traditional means. There's Bill Stuffers. We've really been beefing up our newsletter. And of course, you, you all know that our Prop 218 communication is not just a simple legal notice. It is a, well, it has been four color, four page. It may even be more than that, depending on how this thing lays out. Description of where we have been, where we are, and where we propose to go, and why, in terms of funding considerations that the board will have before them. So, and I do think that that's part of the reason that we haven't seen the level of organized opposition to the funding initiatives this board has undertaken in the six years that I've been with the district. So we'll continue to build on that and only get better with it. And of course, we're always going to be open to new ideas and new ways to invol- involve our customer base as stakeholders and to listen to them. So, so yes, Director Wheaton, this is a very, very strong and multifaceted commitment. We're bringing on a new staff member to help us with this effort. We're really making this a core programmatic commitment to this organization, because either we're going to tell our story or other people will tell our story for us. And so we understand that.
So I'd like to add, I, I, I think the one key point to clarify is that it's not only what's going to be done in order to put out that, that, that Prop 218 notice, but that this program that Susan was discussing is multi-year. The, you're talking, you were talking about what's going to be done from today going forward through the whole course of Project 2030. So my, that's my understanding. Is that correct?
That's correct. So in addition, as we do with our normal ongoing capital improvement program, where Missy gives information, and we put that in our newsletter as an example, or we're highlighting some projects through social media, that will also continue to happen through Project 2030 and ongoing. And just to kind of give reference, when I, from now, like, we are also developing an extra informational flyer that should be going out here relatively shortly in the next month, and that is pre-Prop 218. And we will also have a fact sheet that's going to be developed. That'll be available on the website. It will be, as I mentioned, given to our customer advisory committee, our staff, or members, so that anyone who has any questions has this information at their fingertips. And then our FAQs, frequently asked questions, will also be available. And we have some sample messaging that we are focusing on. We have about four key messages that we're focusing on to communicate through our various channels, like Facebook, Nextdoor, Twitter, Instagram, and our website and YouTube channels.
David, do you have any other questions regarding the education and public engagement strategy?
No, no, thank you. That was very good. And with that, I would move to direct the Citrus Heights Water District to develop an education and public engagement strategy, supporting the adoption and implementation of Project 2030.
I'll second the motion, but I have a couple of comments that, that I'd like to make, too.
Sure, go ahead.
So there are many issues that, that I have concerns about, and it has to do with basic understanding of water issues and where the water comes from. So when we put this program together, we want to be sure that part of the program is understanding how water comes from Folsom Lake through the San Juan Treatment Plant into the Henkel Reservoir into our pipes and distributed to our, our customers. So that, that needs to be a story that's a part of this. At the same time, I have been infuriated with water people talking about units of water, measurement for water, and it just absolutely drives me crazy. Because, and this is, this needs to be a presentation, a five or 10 minute presentation on our website. So a cubic foot of water is 7.48 gallons. That's a cubic foot. You, we sell you water in units of water. Anybody want to guess what a unit of water is? Now, it's, it's, it's 10 by 10. It's a, it's 748 gallons. You're buying water in, in units of 748 gallons. And acre feet, an acre foot of water is 43,560 gallons, or yes, cubic feet in an acre. But anyhow, flows down the American River are measured in cubic feet per second. So when you start adding all of these numbers up, you get gigantic numbers. For instance, on one of the pages in our document, it says Citrus Heights Water District uses 9 million gallons of water a day, or nine and a half million gallons of water a day. Sounds like a lot, right? But when you start calculating that number based on the amount of water that comes out of Folsom Dam, or goes through the water treatment plant, if I, my numbers are right, 1,000 cubic feet per minute flow down the American River, if it's flowing at, at that rate in five and a half days, that's all the water the Citrus Heights Water District would use for a year. So there's a real lack of understanding of volumes of water, because people think that 9 million is a big number, or a billion is a big number, and it is, if you're talking about pennies or dollars. When you're talking about acre feet of water, and Folsom Lake, when it's full, holds 1 million acre feet of water, and yet water's flowing out of it at a tremendous rate all the time. We need to educate people in our district so that they understand where this water is going, and how little, compared to the total volume, is the amount of water that is used by people. We need to understand that, again, if my numbers are right, and I'd be happy to be corrected, that if, at 50 gallons a day, and if there's 40 million people in California, that's 2.25 million acre feet. Shasta's volume is higher than that. There's more water in Lake Shasta than all the people in California would use at 50 gallons per day, per year. So there's these kinds of educational elements that I think the Citrus Heights Water District needs to have so that we can tell people a story to say there's water available for us to use, and the ultimate management of that water is the responsibility of the state and the federal government. And we're not using very much compared to the total flow of water all through the state. So that's a real concern of mine, and I'd like to see a very detailed presentation made with graphs and charts that could show people what these different numbers that we use, units and gallons and cubic feet, really mean. At the same time, I'd like to see presentations in YouTube that talk about what the process is for digging the trench and replacing the pipe, and some pictures of cross-section of pipe, and how big a hole you have to dig to replace a 42-inch main versus a 14-inch main. And some of the things that the, the teams do in the field, and how that looks, and what the process is. So when we say we're going to replace 1.48 miles of 14-inch pipe in the next 10 years, that people understand what the work is that has to be done, how big a trench you have to dig, how much you have to pull out, how many valves you have to turn. And then at the same time, you have to open valve someplace else, so the water keeps getting to the people who need the water while you're replacing the main going down the street. So there are a lot of elements to this that are fundamental education that the CAC talked about, learning when you got to see the pipe, when you got to see in the first few weeks what we were actually working on. So that's, that's my element to this education program is detailed stories about everything that goes into it, and why it's going to cost so many millions of dollars over the next 50 odd years. So with that, I'm done, and I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, Director Really. So roll call vote, President Wheaton?
I put it-
David, you're on-
Yes, I'm sorry.
Vice President Sheehan?
Yes.
Director Really?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, those were good comments, Ray. I thought those are very good suggestions. So I'm all for education, and I agree that it's really important for our consumers to understand in context what we're doing. And I also really like your idea of whether or not we can, you know, if we happen to be repairing a main in the near future, actually videoing it so people can get a concept, because, because as we all know, it's underground. People tend not to think about it, and so, excellent. Okay.
I just would like to tack on. I also appreciate these comments, and I assure you that our new communications manager will be watching this video as it is being recorded to get some inspiration as we move forward. But these are wonderful comments. Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that item three, was there a motion on item three?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so, yeah, we did-
Perfect. All right, so, and then the next slide, we'll just be talking about next steps. So we had a board meetings if necessary, if the board chose not to act on this, these items tonight. So we will not be needing an additional board meeting for this item, but we'll obviously be presenting other items to you in the coming months. Another next step item would be the, the pre-funding component, as outlined in the study, will be included as part of the 2022 budget development process for board consideration in the coming months. And then an education and public engagement strategy supporting the adoption and, and implementation of Project 2030 will be started. And then as part of the study's project preparation phase, the condition assessment of the district's transmission mains will begin. And that was a strategic planning item that we discussed last month, so.
And it looks like Director Wheaton has a question.
Missy, and Hillary, I'm assuming that the CAC will play some future role in holding us accountable?
I can take a, a quick stab. That was actually also highlighted in the presentation, but to reiterate, yes, we are envisioning a role for the CAC to help educate customers, fellow customers in any number of different ways. Some of them we already have imagined, and some of them we don't. But through some dialogue and with some teamwork with our staff person, our team, and with CAC members, we'll come up with lots of different opportunities. It could be letters to the editor. It could be neighborhood area presentations with us. It could be homeowners association presentations and so forth. So there's going to be a lot of opportunity to continue to work with the customer advisory committee moving forward.
And with that, I believe that's the end of the presentation.
Okay, we will move on to D1, other reports. Are there any other reports? No, no other reports. Okay, well then, with that-
I'm sorry, I just wanted to add to your comments about videos and how operations, we do have several videos that we are working on, like replacing a service line is one of them, hydrate, hydrant maintenance, flushing the system. So we have been working, and I know Sheila has been assisting us in getting out there in the field, and several videos are already underway. How to check your toilet for a leak, how to find your meter and check for a leak, underground service alerts, calling 811, how to read your bill. So we have quite a few videos that are, they, they were in the background filming the crews, I think just last week or the week before.
Okay, so those are on our website, or are they on YouTube?
They're still in development. We just kind of filmed, I think, last week or the week before, so we're still putting them together, but definitely underway, and will be coming out shortly.
And just to touch on that, that, that was great that you updated us on that. And to make that last mile, the other thing we'll do is connect a lot of that stuff to why we're doing what we're doing with Project 2030. So there'll be, we'll be able to use these videos in different ways through editing.
Okay. Thank you. All right, well then, yes.
If it's okay to speak at this time, I just, as, as representing the CAC, if I can at this point, and hopefully they'll let me, is that we appreciate very much your affirmation on, on our hard work there and our recommendations to the board, and we appreciate the, the positive vote in that, and then accepting the things that we had recommended. So thank you very much to the board.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Okay, well, with that, I am going to adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you all very much for those who came in person and those who are on the call from the CAC. We very much appreciate your participation. We look forward to your continued participation, and you know, please, please keep in touch. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you all. Good evening.
Thank you, Carol.